Hello, hello. Hello, hello, let me, let me test this mic. Let me test the microphone check. Yes, I hear the ringtone. Hello, hello, what's up, what's up? Good to go, come on, uh, whatever this is called, um. Damn, yeah, come on Zoom. Boeing is up today, not up, but I mean, let's see, am I recording this? Okay, I'm back, it should be recording now. Double recordings, cool. Hello, 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 let me know if you in there. Oh boy. What is DG doing? DG is down a little too much. Where are you DG? Yeah, we gotta get out of that, done, done with this one. Whoa. Limit order at fifty. Nah, we ain't selling at that, bro, no sir. What is that, the? Mars twentieth, one seventy strike. One eighty-two. Force about one seventeen. We're out of here at one fifteen, let's do that. Take me out, shit. And get that other one. One forty-nine ninety-six for DG. What a waste, man, what a waste. Don't you hurt me like that. And the limit on that is, uh, that's, of course, is zero, so. We'll leave it like that. Let me adjust that. The one fifteen. There's a one seventy, one seventy-seven. Who stepped in here, who's in here, let's see, Big Dog, what's up, man?
I can't call it.
Yeah, man, I'm having a good one, I'm trying to, uh. That damn Dollar General got me, dog, I should have studied up a little bit longer on it, uh. With the, um, at earnings, bruh.
They kill it?
Hell, yeah, they did, but, but it's, they getting killed, so. I'm gonna go ahead and take that, take a little bit of the chunk. Take a little loss on that, man. Good.
Forty bucks that I made for the day, and I'm, I'm happy, it was the most fun time I done had in this month, it probably was one of the funnest days I ever had, man.
Really?
Yeah, I was, um, trading NAS and gold.
Yeah.
Nigga, that shit was insane, I was trading on a twenty cent lot. Man, cuz my shit was, I'm just gonna, you know, scalping, get in, get out, profit, I'm out, profit, I'm out. Man, that motherfucker was, at one point, one of the trades that I had, it got into aggressively, nigga, I went down fifty dollars. How the fuck you gonna, oh, fifty dollars fucking with twenty cents?
Oh, dog.
But I came back from it, I, I knew it was, it was a fake out, so I was like, yeah, I'll ride this, I was willing to lose fifty. And then, I, I, I kinda went in that one and hit another one, and I was like, let me stop, cuz this is getting a little too fun.
Yeah, yeah.
It was coming in second, I mean, ten seconds, ten, twenty bucks.
Yeah, yeah. You were killing it, dog, yeah.
And I'm like, man, this is a fucking, I'm doing this for twenty cents?
Yeah.
I had a dollar, woo.
Yeah, dog, I've, I've been watching it, watching it, and I was like, okay, just, I had to slow everything, I had too many trades on. At the same damn time today, but I made, you know, I made my ends, but it's just. Just, I had to slow it down a little bit, dog, and then I had that trade up in Metatrader, I had the Boeing trade still going.
Ooh.
And I, I got, you know, I took, what did I get, I'm, I was gonna send it to you, man, uh.
Did you, uh, add to it?
No, I was at my limit on them.
Uh, gotcha.
Yeah, I made what, uh. Let's see. I pulled a hundred and thirty-nine dollars out of that, man, off the, uh, what's the, when it's like zero point zero five, that's a, what, what type of lot is that?
Zero point zero five, that's a fifty cent lot.
Okay, okay. But shit, I went one thirty-nine, and I, I cashed it out, and just, just, I didn't get back in.
Nigga did two quarters, and turned it into a hundred.
I'll take it, dog.
That's insane, man.
I'll take it, and, and I'm getting, you, you got me on it, now I'm getting used to the pace of it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, that. Okay, there we go, I gotta get in save, dog, save, just hit my, uh. Or Spirit Airlines, just hit. My weakness spot, man.
Yeah.
Love is doing that too.
So are you a cash account or you margin?
Margin, but, um. Think about that, yeah, I'm gonna do. I'm trying not to go into margin unless I, unless I get that. That real winner, dog.
Only reason I ask is like, how do you be day trading if you margin?
Oh, I, I keep overnight, or even not, and I try not to do, I try not to do the three. Go past my window. Bruh.
Yeah, that, actually, the psychology behind that is what kinda fucked me in, in a lot of this money, if it wasn't for. Like the PDT shit, like I gotta burn my account again to where I could just start doing it, cuz. I, I kept like staying in trades when I shouldn't have, just because I didn't wanna waste a day trade, like.
Exactly.
I hate, I had it like, I gotta sell this motherfucker for a profit.
Right.
You know, it was costing me.
I know that feeling, dog. Okay, okay, here we go, we're gonna do, we're gonna do love, man, we're gonna do love. Just make sure I got the put, I bought a call the other day. And shit, excuse me, one more, one, more day, fuck that. All right, fifty-seven.
Let's see, they, they give you that warning?
Yeah, man. Kissed my ass today, dog. And I'm, I'm brother feeling good with the, what I was hitting on today.
Yeah, man, you had a hell of a day.
Yeah, man, and I would, shit, I had just called wifey to say, ask to borrow some money. She gonna be like, it's like, uh, and she always says, tells baby girl, well, your daddy can, know he can make some money, but he know he'll, he'll put it right back on, or, or buy us something, and then ask, ask me to borrow some. Yeah, hey, man, you got a great looking family, dog, that's, that's your people? Your daughter and your wife in the picture? When you went surf, uh, boarding?
Uh, nah, so that, my girl was the one closest to me, uh, and then I, honey, uh, I only got one kid, a son, and nigga like. He about to be seventeen next month.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Congrats, dog.
Appreciate it.
Forty, so thirty-seven, seventy-eight, I'm in love, man, uh. And the March twentieth, forty dollar put, man, let's see, the fifty-eight delta. Fifty-eight, I gotta get back over to, uh. And let's see, the IV is so high. IV in one, 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 three, nine for the open interest. And two twenty, two thirty-eight for the volume.
That's, that's not a bad, uh, the spread ain't that bad, little more than I like to see, but, I mean, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate this, on something like that, I hate to see more than a fifteen cent spread, like, I be fucking myself out of stuff like that too, man, I be having these dumb, I'm, I'm Larry David of trading, like.
Oh, man.
Like, oh, maybe that spread is more, unless it's like Amazon or something like, that spread is more than fifteen, I, I can't do it.
Right, right.
They want me to pay the ass price, nah, I can't do it.
Yeah. I'm giving my money back. You know what, I'm getting out of Zoom, ah, shit, y'all, uh. I was just up in Zoom, I wanna hold. Cuz, but I, I don't like doing it to where like, yeah, I think it should, but it's breaking down below. Well, let's see, it hadn't broken my area. Of true support.
You feeling profit?
Well, I was, I'm, I'm like right at break even, it's.
Man, break even isn't winning to me.
Let me just see, let me see what the spread is on this, six eighty by seven. Six seventy.
Seventy, yeah, yeah, see, that's whack as fuck.
That true, yeah, 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 that was crazy right there, cuz. On the day, coming back. Yeah, we, I think we're gonna get up out of here, man, let's see. Cause I said I was gonna give it to seven, but I'm looking at the chart. It's going down on declining volume, had to pull back, let's see what the thirty looks like, what's up, Mo?
What's up, bro, how you doing?
All right, all right, we got Stefan in here, man.
What's up, Stefan, how you doing, bro?
What's happening, man?
Okay, we're gonna play it off the thirty, uh, let the VWAP be the decision maker on this one right now, one eleven, one twelve. He was at one thirteen, so one eleven ninety-seven. What you got going today, Mo?
Research.
Good, good. You, you may, now, I was thinking last night, I was like, yeah, my man is so, he can hold off and see, he can, I said, me and Stefan in there going, what's up, man, what you got? And then Mo was like, okay, guys, I got AJD, take a look at this, uh, on such and such, and, and you know, I've been kinda looking at them, why, why are you doing that, I'm like, shit. It looks like that, it looks like that's close enough to a buy for me, that's, you know. I, I just hopped into, uh. Back into Southwest Airlines puts. In the March twentieth, forty dollar, uh, put.
Oh, that's nice.
At four forty, so, and just the, the chart, man, looks, and you know what? Let me pull, let me put it on here, man, it might be, uh, might be something to add to, depending on, yeah, I'm adding to this, man. I'm adding to it.
Yeah, that's way down. How far back?
I got in at four forty. All right, I paid a little extra.
It's sitting at a support level from twenty sixteen.
It is?
Yo.
Let's see, thirty-seven, I think it's gonna break it, man, it broke it before, in the pre-market, um.
Actually, that support level is really around thirty-six, so. Yeah, it got some ways it could go.
Man, let me see the five.
And thirty-four, and then thirty-two, thirty.
No, I'm, I'm telling y'all, man, I, I love this. Dog, this is, uh. And then last night, I was walking around, uh, I was looking, had to get some water, man, water was sold out, people had made money on, on draws, and, and all the towels and toilet paper was gone, and.
Oh, nigga, that, yeah, that's how it was, I went to two stores last night, already been starting my, my TP port and all the other shit.
Yeah. Thirty-seven oh one, let's go. Let's go.
This thing falling, and that volume is, uh. The volume is picking up. Let me see, let me look at something else here. Let's check.
Hey, you checking the volume under, uh, which timeframe?
Um. Well, right now, I just switched to an hourly chart, I was just on the daily, but I'm on the hourly right now.
Okay.
Wanted to see. Um. The volume on orders, and it's a whole lot more volume on sell orders than buy orders.
Really?
From forty on down.
Hey, hey, y'all, this room is, uh, I, I made it o, pretty much open, so.
I hope people join.
Well, yeah, no, I just like.
And see, uh, make sure I.
And I took the video off unless you, you know, it's, it's up to y'all to put it on.
Let's see.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I had too much luck and too much fun, I think I, I need to chill for the day, I'm, I, even though I say that almost every day.
Yeah.
I, I'm feeling good with my wins. It's a couple of Forex pairs, though, they're setting up, fuck. Damn, I should have gotten that GU, that GU is falling through the fucking roof.
Yeah, I got out of, did I get out of Zoom? Didn't get me out? What the hell? Zoom didn't take me out yet.
Man, Disney under a hundred, oh.
Nigga, don't tell me that, that shit got my stomach hurting.
Oh, Disney is not the focus right now, where we at?
I.
Lee.
That's my biggest L, I'm down over, I mean, and it's not that big, cuz I don't, I don't really fuck with stocks like that, but I'm down five hundred in Disney. Or it's probably more than that now, since it's under a hundred, so, yeah.
Ninety-four twenty-six, ninety-four thirty, right now.
Damn.
Now, if, now this, you know, when they say buy the dip, if I was gonna buy long term, which I, I, that's what I like. Di- Disney's a long term, but I would buy that right there.
Oh, that's staying on the list, that's staying on the list, I'm, I'm licking my chops. I wasn't in the position, but, I've been following this one for a couple of years too, uh, since they bought Fox.
Gold, I missed out on that gold drop.
Where would you have played the gold, man?
Huh?
Would you have played it in Metatrader?
Yeah, XAU USD.
XAU, okay, USD, all right.
That's the gold pair.
Gold is, so yesterday, when I had, when I told you had that Zoom, I caught all of this, and we was like low key taking trades last night, uh, hitting gold in, uh, GU. But fucking, I think, uh, the, the Brits got bad news today. And so, uh, I think the pound is dropping, that's why that GU trade, cuz we, we expected the, uh. The GU to bounce off and go, uh. And go back on a little low key bull run, maybe that shit broke right through, actually here, uh, I'll grab the screen for a second.
Yeah, 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 take it, take it.
You gotta stop yours real quick.
Okay, hold on, let's see, so, so just stop share, all right?
And then, yeah. So.
And the way we talked through that stuff yesterday, man, like, we were going, and then, yeah, you know, y'all will. Hey, take a peek at this.
Uh-huh. So we was like, when I was talking to, to the team on, on the shit, we was like right above support, I'm like, man, as soon as this motherfucker break. You know, go in, uh, actually, we was thinking that it was gonna bounce up like it's been doing.
Yeah.
But we don't get in on the sale, and then we started, ah, we'll wait for it to set up, and I didn't get in, and this motherfucker said, whoop.
Wow.
Ah, it's in the all, it was in that all in short mode right there, man, where you just hopping gravy train.
Mm-hmm.
I had been studying that again, man, as to, cuz my big thing was like, okay, I'm a ride, I'm a, I'm a pullback entry dude, but sometimes that gravy train is moving.
Yeah.
Latch on, and it already, who drew out the trend line, man, that's nice.
Right, yeah, yeah, so this was, uh, this is one of the trades we was looking at, this is, like, all the shit you can trade in, uh, in Trading View, I mean, not Trading View, but, uh.
Metatrader.
Metatrader, so like US oil. This motherfucker then played out to perfection. But this motherfucker dropped so fast, but, you know, we had these levels drawn out. Uh, once it broke this little trend line here.
Yeah.
Saying, somebody else just joined the neighborhood.
See who came in, who was in there?
Cheryl, hey, Cheryl. Cheryl, who is this nigga? Let me see, what else was I looking at?
Hey Cheryl, how you doing, this JD, that's, uh, King Steph, and you got Maurice over there.
What's going on?
Uh, I think, let's see, what else was I looking at, uh? I think I was looking at GN. Yeah, all you gotta do was just search the, uh. Search the, uh.
That list.
Yeah, and these pairs, man, some of these pairs be moving, so check it out, like, I just measure, uh, how many pips this is, cuz you know, the pips, it, it changes depending on what you trading. So, just this bar right there, look at the pips. That tiny little movement. And so like, so the GBPs, they move, they probably one of the most volatile, um, pairs. So anything GBP is, is moving, uh, like the. Like the GU, I mean, this move, had you caught this move. Right now, if you'd have caught it from the line to here. That's three hundred pips.
Yeah. Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm taking a look at, uh, Spirit, man, it, it just broke through the support, it's, uh, SAVE, Spirit Airlines, and. Hey, let, let me grab the screen back, one sec.
You got it.
Okay, let me see.
So with you being the, um, the host, you can stash the screen from anybody, you don't have to ask for it.
Well, hey, okay, I got you, I got you. We got Mo Fuller and Ms. Cheryl Carter, let me unmute, I have to unmute everybody, damn, I didn't realize that, okay. Unmute all, we're letting everybody talk, and, uh, Cheryl's mic isn't there, but, okay, anyway, man, let me, let me hop in, uh. See what we have with Spirit. Yeah, there we go, the.
That one's falling too.
You know what, and I'm, I'm going, I'm not compromising on my, uh, options, hell, look at that IV. Uh.
Woo, shit.
Ah, I'm in it, man.
Oh, wow.
I'm paying for it, dog.
Oh, wow.
What, what, what?
The IV.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take the hit, but I, I think the chart's setting up, I'm not gonna take that chance of missing it, man.
I feel that, are you, uh, do you always, uh, like, even when you do your limits, you never, uh, bid your own price, you just pay the?
Well, that, that was such a tight spread right there, man, it was, spread was like twenty for me, so, well, thirty, I just said, let me just hop in, man.
I feel you, I, I just wondered if you do, like, man. Trades like that, cuz nigga, I'd never pay what they want, like, I try to.
Hey.
Cheapest entry ever.
I, I like that, but like in a mar, in a hot moving market, and even though Spirit doesn't fly, it doesn't move, move, I was like, I might as well go ahead and, uh. Go ahead and move, you know.
Yeah, now, I talk all that shit, but when I leverage trade, I only do market orders, cuz I want it fast.
Yeah, dog, that's, uh, I was putting, and that's crazy, I was putting the limits in, uh, on, on the leverage trade, and I was like, yeah, I'm gonna go in it. I'm not gonna pay this, and wasn't getting filled, after I did all the, you know, thought I really, uh, did something with a little ten bucks.
Yeah, man, you gotta, you gotta, when you leveraging, unless you just like really waiting and trying to get a quick entry, you just gotta fucking pay the market price.
Hey, Mo, uh, let's see, Mo Fuller.
What's up?
What's up, Big Dog, uh, yeah, man, we just, uh, moving through this market right now, right now, I'm pretty much. Um, I'm short love, which is, uh. Southwest Airlines, I'm in it, what is that, thirty-seven eighty, I'm in the March twenty. Forty dollar puts, and I'm in, just hopped into. Spirit Airways, in the, damn, I need to write it out, excuse me. What, what's your background, man, you, you a trader, you an investor?
Uh. Trader, right now, uh, this is Maurice Fuller, if you remember.
Well, what's up, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Fuller Maurice.
Yeah.
All right. Appreciate your company, man.
Yeah, I'm just, I lo, I love your technicals, man, I'm just learning from you right now, so.
Well, you got, uh, in here today, man, I appreciate it, you got King Stefan, and, um.
Right.
Maurice Jackson, both of them, you know, technical traders, and, what's up?
So I got, you got some experts in here, I'm just sitting back, man, I'm, I'm.
Shoot, if you wanna take over the screen and, and pull up what, you know, a chart or something, feel free, dog.
Uh, I'm, I'm good right now, I actually just closed a couple of orders on Triple Q and Spy and, you know, DIA. Um, I am a option seller, you know, I like the income.
Oh, you, you wanna, you the bank, you the bank, dog. You got a banker in there, I like that, dog.
Right.
I started off, um, start off maybe two, three years ago, I started off too fast, thinking I know what was going on. Put ten thousand in it, in my account real quick, and blew ten thousand within like less than a year, thinking I knew what I was doing. With options, buying calls, buying puts, not really doing what I was supposed to do. Now I'm back, you know, and trying to start small with, you know, a little. Four, six thousand account, you know, and actually sell the income like I'm supposed to, so.
So what are you doing, naked, or are you doing?
Oh, no, I'm, um, I'm actually messing, right now, I'm messing with RJ Holder, uh, with Iron Condors. So that, that's really good, right there with the strategy he has with the Iron Condors and, uh, the credit, uh, call spread and stuff like that. Um, other than that. Um, other than that, I was uh gonna get into selling some long, uh, well, when the market comes back, try to sell some long um uh puts and sell weekly put. I'm trying to sell weekly uh options for income pretty much uh when the market gets right. But until then, Iron Condors and credit spreads.
Oh, nice.
Just missed the NAS drop, JD.
What I mean?
Damn near two hundred bucks.
Oh, what?
The the um.
Gold?
No, no, no. Now, let me get that screen for a second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, you gotta stop it.
Oh, shit, yeah.
So when you traded on uh, well, you know, when you trading it on, what's his name? The NAS one hundred?
Yeah.
Nigga, this was in a couple minutes. Watch. That's on the daily. Let me uh, let me get down to the to the five minute.
Wow.
Nice.
Ugly.
This was from seventy-six to seventy-four.
Oh, goodness.
Ah, man.
So that's nasty, bro.
Yeah, that would have been about, I was telling, oh, you you weren't here. I was telling them my story, uh, Mo. I I didn't make them but a little forty bucks, but I made it in like seconds.
Yeah.
I kept scalping scalping this cuz like you could throw a ten cent lot on this, man. Actually, I do a twenty cent lot on this. That shit moved like dollars, like you fucking, you throw twenty cents down on this and in thirty seconds, you have twenty bucks off of two dimes. It's it's insane. This shit moves. But you can't, like, depending on how much money you have in your account, it's how much you can leverage. Like, if you did a dollar lot on this, you know, on a ten cent lot, if you made ten, ten bucks in ten seconds, you'd make a hundred bucks on a dollar lot. But you probably gotta have about, I don't know, a couple racks in here for before they let you do a dollar lot. But every candle, like if you just trade, like I literally, when I trade this shit, I try to trade one, maybe two candles. Like, this one candle, we'll just measure it out real quick. This one candle be, it's twenty, twenty-one pips. So if he was a uh, if he was trading on a a dollar lot, it's twenty-one bucks right there off for one minute. A dollar.
I will learn that in the future.
I know, right?
Catch this candle, like say, you know, on a ten cent lot, you know, you figure you gotta work a little more, but you catch this one candle cuz, you know, you see the three pan setting up.
Mm-hmm.
And uh.
And all their red candles coming in multiples. Like, I don't see one by itself, so.
Yeah, let me see how much. Just this, just this little trading zone. Forty pips. And you could, you know, ride it up, ride it down, ride it up, ride it down, but you literally get to get in and out of a trade in a couple seconds.
Yeah, man. Y'all keep rocking. And give me one sec, man. I need to uh step away, see if if my game's gonna pop up today.
Got you.
All right.
Anything else to, anybody else is watching?
Uh, I just got, I just took a look at uh Nike. Um, just news report came up that another basketball player got the coronavirus. Another one. Uh, let me see, what's his name? Um, Donovan Mitchell.
Well, with the Jazz, the Jazz gonna have the whole team.
Donovan Mitchell tested positive.
Rudy Gobert.
In addition to Rudy Gobert.
So I'm thinking like, nigga, you done gave me this shit.
Touching the mics. So, yeah, I was looking at Nike. Nike way, 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 way down.
I can see a Skype, a scalp on Nike maybe going down to seventy-one bucks. I don't know. I don't have, I don't have that 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 foresight, man. My shit is is short. I I see short sighted. I can see it testing this. It's seventy-one fifty, which is still the uh four dollar move. But let's see, don't be gay.
Yeah.
Daily, it's goddamn ugly. Yeah, I can see. I mean, it already went to seventy-one and tested it. I could see it going back, testing it again.
Probably possibly looking at, oh, I'm at. Yeah, seventy-two.
So, uh.
Seventy.
I can, I can see that. I can, man, I I hate swinging shit in this market, man. Like, even though it seemed like the put swing seemed to be pretty, you seem to be pretty all right with that.
Yeah, man.
Gold is, man. It's weird for the gold and dollar to be dropping.
That's, that's what's alarming. I ain't even gonna like, everything like.
Correlation, dog, is going crazy.
The gold and Bitcoin crash today.
Yeah.
Everything fell today. Like, that's, man.
Dollar is selling, gold is doing good. But gold and the dollar can't, this, this is some weird shit.
Yeah, it is. It definitely is.
I tell you this, man, uh I'm, I don't know if I brought it up before. I told y'all yesterday, man, during that, was that, it was oh eight, man, I had just kinda gotten to my rhythm of trading options and I started, I started buying puts in the in the uh banking sector. I bought and I I put it in Lehman. I bought puts on Lehman every day, Bear Stearns. I I hit on Chase. The only bank that would would bite me every time was was Bank of America. And that's when I realized Bank of America is properly cat- you know, that uh was collateralized. They had their reserves ready, so I couldn't do them. And I couldn't do somebody else, but I got Wachovia. I got, so I'm looking at this. The regional banks were the ones, some of them were the ones that were uh that fell hard early. But then um it it just um I I don't know, man, with the with the dollar and gold going in the same direction, it's gonna scare some folks, but we can find, man, we can find that anomaly and make that move. You know, like right now, the airlines and the damn cruise cruise spots, that was, I should have just stayed in a couple of them from yesterday. But I'm looking at the rental cars, like Hertz, Avis, and the hotels, man. Um, they were, somebody was talking about um like Hilton. Uh, where, what is Hilton?
I stand corrected not to cut you off, but the dollar is coming back. Dollar, the the, this is the Dollar Strength Index right here. And uh, yeah, we, they coming back. They have, dollar is up. I think cuz of the bad news that uh that the the pound got. That's why uh that GU pair is tanking cuz uh cuz uh the dollar is fucking killing them right now. I think I might have to get it. I hate being tardy to the party, but I think I might have to hop in this shit. I might just go ten cent lot and let it ride.
And just let, let's see what what happens out of it.
Yeah, cuz I mean, it it has I mean, I guess it may find supported one twenty-five oh eighteen, maybe. Let's see how it reacts there. It definitely got room to fall.
I just hopped, uh, added to my position in uh let's see.
You can take the screen back, man.
Okay, okay, uh, let's see. And I'm not gonna be able to, there's no game today. Other rain out.
At least it's a rain out.
Well, where I am, man, is I'm trying to see some minor league players and uh and the weather just is not cooperating with me. I'm I'm in Phoenix right now for spring training.
That's what's up.
Yeah, man. Uh, I just moved back. I'm another, another uh contract on Spirit. Once uh it's down to fifteen ninety-three, but I'm I'm in it. Um, sixteen oh one and sixteen oh four were the entries for the for the stock. And I got in the the option, the March twentieth, twenty dollar put. That IV is unreal, man. Hopefully, it goes to seven hundred, so I can. Hey, but anyway, man, I'm 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 with this one with uh seventy-one Delta. It was in the high sixties earlier, so I'll take that. And um but Spirit, the the only thing with Spirit, man, is that ATR was is uh like seventy-two cents, seventy-seven cents. Let's see. Brothers, brother's gonna drive home, man. If they shut our season down or postpone it, I'm not getting on their flight.
I know that's right.
ATR for Spirit, oh, Spirit going two seventy-seven with the ATR. Fifteen eighty-five, all right. Yeah. And there's the support with like what we were talking about with uh Southwest, Mo. At thirty-six ten handle. Give or take.
Yep.
And we have uh we got Maurice Fuller, Mo Jax, King Stefan, myself, and another guest, uh, let's see, uh no mic, but welcome, welcome, uh, number three, three, four, three, two, seven, thirty, forty-five.
Hey JD, I got a question, man, or a comment, I guess. Um, have you heard of the uh ETF QID? It, they say it um runs inverse of the NASDAQ one hundred. So every time the NASDAQ goes down, uh, this ETF is QID goes up.
QID or QIV?
D as in dog.
All right. Oh, shit, look at it. Let's see.
So it runs opposite of the NASDAQ.
Oh, damn.
And you can still buy calls on this.
I was just about to say, let's see.
This is probably one of the stocks that you can buy calls on and actually be, you know.
In a good position.
Yeah.
How liquid are they, though?
It's it's, it looks pretty decent.
I mean, the volume right now is about eight million. I don't know if that's.
Oh, shit. Say no more.
Look, what's the uh call and option volume like in the open, actually, the open interest?
I'm 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 looking through uh tasty works right now, so I don't think I know about that stuff.
On the calls right now, open interest is twenty-three forty-one, put is three oh four.
That's not bad. My usual um go-to number for open interest, well, and for volume is spot.
Pretty good.
Crystal Hawkins. Hey, Crystal Hawkins? But, no, man, that shit, um, are you in, are you in any of those?
Uh, no, I was actually reading on it um yesterday. I was gonna probably try to get in today.
That is a great uh doggone. That's something I'm putting in my pocket right there. If I if I'm gonna trade it, I'm 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 gonna have to trade in the afternoon hour on this one, though. So I can get a feel for uh how this one runs, but damn, man, I like it.
Look at those spreads, though.
There's a way you can find several um
The spreads are ugly, yeah. Yeah, unless you get close to the, unless you get close to the money at that point.
Right, true that.
But other than that, out the money, I'm.
But the spread on on the the thirty, the thirty, you know, the thirty strike, man, is is.
The best one.
And let's see what the uh April seventeenth looked like. I didn't mean to cut you off, Mo.
I'm I'm listening, man. Y'all do y'all.
No, you're good. You good.
Uh, and thirty dollar, the thirty dollar uh strike on April seventeenth has the best, well, one of the better spreads. Yeah, man, shit.
That's still sixty. That shit.
Yeah, but I shit, man, uh, is is the best. I don't wanna get stuck in it, though. That's that's the thing.
It doesn't have that much volume, yeah.
Hey, is uh, are y'all seeing my screen at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, look at, look at uh Spirit, man.
Man, it's falling. Man, I'm I'm actually glad you uh made that point cuz I wanted to make a a point kinda from a economic point of view uh on your statement when you were talking about the last crisis and being able to kinda find a way to capitalize on it. What I've been reading and what I come to see is that, and I actually, man, I might have to find the article, but it kinda pointed this out is that um corporate debt is just like the subprime mortgage. So just like how you were able to um capitalize on the banks because the banks were the ones that were feeling the heat because of the bad loans. Um, the same, I, my thinking, my uh, I don't know, I guess my prediction or whatever is the, is as liquidity dries up this time, as it has been, is we can see because of the uh overnight repos for the last like six months. As liquidity continues to dry up, it's gonna be companies that um are highly indebted. And you can see this playing out now. Um, it's like the article I sent you earlier, um, or maybe it was last night about Boeing taking out that revolving loan. Um, not because, not, not simply just because they need it, but because the banks might freeze up and not be able to lend anymore. So all of these companies, the airline companies you also mentioned, um, rental car companies, you also mentioned hotels. I mean, when I, I mean, I have to actually look at balance sheet, but when I think about those companies, I think about hotels and I think about the property. So that's a lot of debt that they gotta take on to uh own the property. I think about the rental cars, that they have to take on a lot of debt in order to purchase those cars from um, the the auto. So all of these company, all of these high debt companies a- and also that's what is going on in the oil um industry right now, um, going on in Texas. A lot of the US shale oil um has been produced by highly indebted oil companies. And the fact that oil, the oil price is tanking is the reason why a lot of those companies is tanking and they may be able to service their debt. So um, I don't know, my 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 prediction is that the most highly indebted companies are gonna be the ones that take the brunt of the next year or some change. You know, I'm I'm looking at one, the stuff that we use now, we gotta stay home. All telecommunications gonna fly. That uh, I think, I think um uh, who is that that do the spiders? Um, I think it's State Street. Um, I think they may have known something a few years ago when they changed up the um ETF and made the XLC um uh XLC Spider, the Communication Spider. Um, cuz I think communications are probably be over the next couple of years, probably one of the either best performing or least worst performing sectors.
Best of the worst.
Yep. So that's what, that's that's, as I'm sitting here watching this and I'm I'm watching certain things play out when I don't trade and when I research, it's like those dots, that's that's what I try to connect. I guess it's just the the economic, the economist thing, you know.
That's shit. That's that's why, that's why I like hearing you break it down, man, with with, and and they also mentioned on the, you know, the repos, the fact that um initially, they tell people, go ahead and go ahead and use that revolver, man, and draw draw it down, even if you don't need it. Now, when stuff is, when it's hitting the fan, if everybody pulls on that revolver at the same time, like let's say one, one particular bank has one out to multiple people, it's gonna start that domino effect, man. And let's see.
And that's basically what happened to Lehman Brothers in two thousand. They tried to get some uh money to uh cover their losses and nobody would lend to them, so they had to close their doors. And I'm just, I'm really just waiting to see what comes. Man, wouldn't it be some shit if it was Boeing? Oh! Man, that was, that was blow. But, you know, I'm just. But, you know, I'm just, I'm waiting to see what company it is, cuz this, it's just a matter of time now, to me.
And I'm I'm a, be honest, man, I don't want people losing jobs, but if we, if we can spot. If we spot the anomaly in the market. I'm running with.
I was reading in another article that was saying um talking, that was comparing our market to the Chinese market and what uh was noted that the coronavirus completely like decimated their service sector. And, you know, as much as people, um, you know, make uh uh uh, or not people, I would say as much as investors or the uh news or public make about uh manufacturing numbers here. Um, service is the crux of, you know, the bulk of our GDP is services. So if our service sector get crushed like theirs is and we just now getting started with this. Man, like, man, I just, I don't know, it's, it's a lot of, I, it's a lot of downside. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fundamental things that um are crumbling right now.
I'm gonna take a look at USB right quick, man. Let's see here. I would, I I pulled up the banking, diversified banks on the screens. And then uh going by industry. I'm gonna go with the, pull up the regionals real quick and, and I like to have at least four hundred thousand in volume, man.
Yeah, it was good uh chopping it up with trouble, man. I gotta get to, I'm already late fucking with this, but uh fuck it.
Good, uh, we appreciate you coming through again, man.
Yeah, man, you know, anytime, for sure, y'all be safe.
You too.
Okay, we got fifth third, uh, we got the net change. And if anybody else wants to look at anything, please chime in, don't, don't, don't hesitate. Okay. The exchange, 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 exchange. First Republic is down five forty-seven, their low of the, the two week low is. Oh my goodness. It flipped kind of quickly. Okay, we're gonna look at uh first FRC and then I said USB. Alright.
Can you pull up the um financial spider as well?
Yeah.
Compared to the market.
So XLK? Or XLF? Yeah. Let me go, you wanna put the daily on, want me to put the daily on it?
Same timeframe as a.
Let's go thirty minute, I'm gonna put the thirty minute on there. We go ten days thirty. Let me go USB. Oh my goodness, look at USB. Sound like I'm in a country, I love it. Okay.
So, just off the bat, it's falling slightly harder than the general market, so.
With uh both, right, or or?
No, I'm looking, cuz the reason why I said pull up the XLF because that, that's the spider of company, so that's pretty much the market of banks. And so comparing USB the market, right, it's falling, it's falling harder than the market, so. Um, tendency to the downside is stronger than.
Let me pull up the news on USB. I think that's the next, this is the next region of study tonight, man. For me is uh sector top financial stocks fall pre-market. USB files for potential mix shift offering on the eleventh. I need to figure out what that is right there.
You know, when, kind of when I was posting about or you were posting about, you know, uh relative price and, you know, by the buy the dip conversation or, you know, what, what is, you know, a low price? Um, you know, value is relative, so you always wanna, you know, take that low price into consideration. Um, well, I'm sorry, in context with something else, usually uh, or most professional um, fund managers will use some type of benchmark or some type of index. And so, um, the spiders, because they're by sector, are great. Um, the uh S and P five hundred spider, the spy, um, to compare it to the general market. Um, if this is that company, then then uh Nasdaq, um, or well, the QQQ, um, which is the Invesco ETF for the Nasdaq. You know, just a uh a kind of good way to compare, I mean.
I like.
Try to compare apples to apples.
And we, no, we need this every day, man. Uh, look, we got the yearly, we got the daily chart on a USB, let me just put up one screen. My favorite right there. Cuz my brother is going up, I'm getting up in there. Let me go three-year weekly. It fell off that shelf, it fa, it was in that trading range from all this time. Going back to uh twenty seventeen. Had a little shelf built, everything, man. Boom, had a little, I'm, I wonder what kind of news we had right there.
What, what, what year was, what's the timeframe right there?
That's uh twenty-eight, December twenty eighteen.
Oh yeah, that's when the market fell in October, November and December twenty eighteen.
The economist knows. Found some support, ran up, ran up, then it's ride. Let me put the, I'm gonna throw the uh two hundred on here, man, this is well below the two hundred, so.
That's another thing I've been doing as far as charting is man, seeing like relatively where these prices are to pass levels. Uh, you know, how, how I chart support and resistance. I mean, I, man, I can't pull it up cuz I'm on my phone, I'm on my uh office computer and I don't have a computer. I got like two big screens, but no computer on this one. So, I mean, no uh video camera on this computer, so. Um, but, um, I, I, I've been going back years and I've been noticing that um prices are breaking. You know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen lows. Uncharted territory for a lot of stocks.
Well, uh we got Colin came in the room, what's going on, Colin? Welcome, brother. Okay, on the weekly, man, oversold. It could stay oversold for weeks. It could bounce a little bit, find some support, let's see what the uh daily looks like on this, cuz I think, man, let's go five year. There we go.
See.
That's the gap. That's created, found some, the, the lows of that back in twenty seventeen. Yeah, it's twenty seventeen, okay. February of twenty seventeen. Our low was. Thirty-seven oh seven. Okay. Well. I'm gonna have to study this entire sector, man. Cuz it, that's the, this is the anomaly, man. Hey, you take over, Mo, let me, uh, you can't do the screen, can you?
Nah, I can't do the screen.
If you don't mind, just let me take this call from wifey uh quickly.
Nah, you good. You better take the call from wifey. Wish I would not answer my wife's phone. I don't know, maybe uh, it's a couple wives in here that can uh that can attest, but no, um just like he was saying, looking at. Take that call from the missus, that's right.
Oh, you better.
I don't care, what's going on? Is any, uh, is anybody in anything right now? Have him pull up some charts or something while we're looking.
Anything right now? What about Zoom?
Actually, that's one, uh, I might actually have him pull that up, cuz we've been talking about Zoom uh the past few days. Um, Zoom is one of those that is relatively uh doing well, so.
Why, why, it looks like Nintendo, um, what is it, NTS or something like that? Man, they don't wanna.
TDOY, I think is that tick, NT, NTDOY or ODY?
Drop it off.
Nintendo? What, what's that?
I'd be interested in about the gaming sector too, as far as to watch for rebounds. I would think things, uh, I, I don't know, I kind of feel like games and streaming will be in, in the telecom kind of arena.
I'm sorry, not.
Services, so.
It wasn't Nintendo, it was uh, the symbol was NTS, though. That, that stock is looking like it's gonna be a leader no matter what.
Yeah.
It's gotta deal with something though, man. Just a little. But it, it's been running, man, for, for a good minute.
I'm looking at its ratings in the IBD, it is a highly rated company.
It stayed above, it's trended and stayed above, it's, it's above the two hundred and go ahead, Mo, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm just looking at the ratings and it kind of goes into like, like I was saying. Uh, looking into just any, anything with telecommunications or wireless communication or um phone game, being able to connect with people or and or work mobily, I think those are gonna do the best moving forward. And a lot of these software companies um, are well positioned. Um, if anybody is a reader or just wanna kind of pick up the Investors Business Daily, kind of is kind of tilted towards tech stocks a little bit, so um they do highlight a lot of software companies very well. Um, and I've seen them do a few articles on NetEase, um, this company in particular.
I love that site.
Worth the uh.
Yeah, I love that site, man.
Yeah. I'm a faithful reader of the paper. Every week.
Guys, um, let's see. The, with the market down, I was gonna try to, let's see who we have in here. We have nine, we have Crystal Hawkins. We have uh Erica and Crystal, Kylan and Cass. And the esp, and a special guest, but if there's anything you guys wanna look at, cuz right now, man, I'm looking at the airline sector. Uh, let's, let's go to the, on the left side of the screen. I can do it on the big one. Uh, got the regional banks up there, but I li, I liked on investors bit, well. On ThinkorSwim, I like to use my baskets, so like with the airline, I made an airlines basket. And tried to keep track of that, like Boeing is, let's see, one sixty-five. Boeing's kind of bounced a little bit today after going down to that one. Boeing has been as low as like one fifty-six for me, and I cashed, I wanna just cashed out, but I'm just watching the, the entire sector down twenty-three, twelve, you know, or you go with the percentages if I have the percentage decline. And so a lot of weakness in this sector, but I, Delta is surprising me. Uh, I would think the percentages cuz they're, they're gonna be the leader to get them out of of that, that, that comeback, let's see. There we go, Marcus says change. Alright. Did I get it in there? There it is, alright, so Delta is down fourteen percent, but the okay, Spirit. And you have Spirit Aero Systems. United is, is very weak with the uh, with the United chart as well. And they've, they've had news. That's the daily chart, and I, I know a lot of people talk about the buy uh, buy the dip situation. And if you're gonna buy a dip. And 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 the chart is looking like this, man, and let me ooh, the price axis down, guys. And the chart looks like this, even if you can't read a chart from left to right, we can just remove, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna clean it up too. Let's remove the simple moving average off of here. Take everything off. You got, uh, basically we follow a trend line, even if without going so deep into the candles, we had the trend line, up, down. Found support, ran up to the highs, and we're looking at United, ninety-five dollars and, and about fifty cents. And that's in the twenty, July of twenty nineteen, sold off, but and when it sold off, it still stayed above the low, previous lows. So we have higher lows, pre, but still in the trading range, going up. Made a high in uh twenty nineteen, September twenty nineteen, but it didn't reach the previous highs. But it kind of stayed in a little.
More news.
Anyway, stayed in that area, but, okay, we get to this little area over here, we come into November twenty nineteen. Showing weakness and we finally get to twenty twenty and that's, that's when we fall below. This, this is a thirty period uh exponential moving average, but we can, it, it, it's a, it's a trend line, it's a lagging indicator. And the, what we're looking at, guys, we're following price. And if price continually stays below certain moving averages or continually makes new lows and can't repeat and, and go up and find a new high. We have weakness and this is weak. Is weak, United is, and United's one of the uh, was one of the stalwarts in, in the, in the uh sector. See, thank you by the dip because most, alright, got that. I take the call for my apologies background, no, it's no problem, Crystal. Sorry for missing these text messages, everybody, but uh okay, the one-year range, but if, if you buy the, okay, the only way you buy this dip is if you're looking twenty years out, fifteen years out, ten years out, because the idea is we don't know how long this weakness is gonna last, and it, it looks like United is, has, this is a five-year chart, it's gunning for the lows of uh twenty sixteen. You know, that low down there was thirty-seven forty-one, it closed on that date of uh June twenty-seventh at forty-one thirty-seven. You know, so we're, we're looking for lows that we haven't seen in, in several years. And if you buy it, there's a continuing. Now, up here, if I just draw this out, uh that is supply, that's overhead supply. Then we have another supply zone. Even if I wanted to go right here. Uh, I need, I'd rather say supply is really another supply zone. Right there. And then we have legit resistance about to come up right in the uh at fifty, fifty-eight, so to recover from this with, with United. Wow. Yeah, man, my, my, my season's about to be done, they just wrapped up NBA, PGA Tour wrapped up, and then um and I'm si, I'm sitting here. my soccer, and I'm si- I'm sitting here waiting for a game, I'm not. And all these fans just rolling, I, I can't do it, man, I.
I feel you, man.
I'm going to the minor league side and, and anyway, anyway, we'll talk about that, but I'm just showing y'all how, how I look at different things, I was trained to watch support and resistance, if you wanna, you can't take over the screen, you said, right, Mo?
Nah, but I could, I could still talk about, I could still talk on what you have up here. Um, just thinking about buy the dip, like, it, man, we've been having a few conversations about that, like, you know, first of all, buy the dip is a bullish, oh, I'm sorry, a bull market relevant term. Um, and even just looking at this stock, this, um, this chart, um, in order for buy the dip to remain relevant, I mean, the market would have to, um, or the stock would continue to, uh, have to stay bullish. And even in, in, you know, the, the top zone that you have, that, uh, where it was pretty much a channel, it was pretty much, you know, pretty much sideways, it didn't really go. Um, even still, um, buying the dip really went out of play at that gap down after the first, uh, like towards the end, uh, the first large green, large red candle, um, towards the top. Um, after, after that gap down, one, it's a daily chart, uh.
Yeah, that's weekly, let me go to daily. Let me go to three-year daily. Uh, let's, let me switch it up, guys. All right, that's the daily. Let me darken that up. And well, I mean, this is U- United, man, United was propped up, I'm gonna put American up there, the trend looks different, United found that it stayed in that trading range from the timeframe and it, and it found a little support, it poked his head out. Okay, okay, here we go, man. When I, okay, let's just say we're in this period right here from twenty seventeen through twenty eighteen, October twenty eighteen. Better run up, big run up and it stalled out, found, you know, found a little, little resistance, found its peak at the height was, uh, seventy-eight eighty-four, little sell-off, little sell-off. Okay, let's test it again, I'm gonna run up in a lot, and basically, we had a bullish trend. Bull channel, a good run, a good run started in, uh, November of twenty seventeen, the run continued through twenty eighteen. Well, start in twenty, and right in here, it kind of met its little, it's, you know, consolidation. And, um, when it, when you see price kind of reach a plateau, there is accumulation going on, there's people buying shares and it's not just retail buyers, it's, it's, uh, institution, uh, institutional investors, anything like that, it's not really moving that price, they're buying it at fair price and it kept it above that blue line, which is basically that, that's my, uh, that's a ten E M A, but it, it won't be exactly the same. But anyway, you finally had the breakout. A big gap up, I don't know if you guys can see that, but, uh, yeah, the breakout occurred. And now this, that, that big bullish candle right there, retail buyers are getting in and the mania is happening. Lot of mania and if you look down here, guys, the R S I, it broke seventy, anything above seventy is overbought. Below thirty is, uh, oversold, so overbought, overbought, you can stay overbought for weeks, but when you see it over seventy, you know, the day of reckoning is coming to the downside. It's something, you can't predict it when, but you can, you, if you go long, you're going along with the thought process or the understanding that this is not gonna last forever. Like when they, when people buying those, uh, biotech stocks, uh, the little, the, the penny stocks for coronavirus, you, you buy it for this period, it's a niche investment, because when Corona gets settled, that baby's gonna go back to trading how it was, it's, it's not a life change, uh, uh, stock investment, there's, there's no lottery ticket. So, okay, anyway, we go into that, run-up, 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 institutional investors have, they've built their position at these different levels right here where the plateaus are, boom, no crazy, there's no crazy candles, it's just, okay, steady, steady, probably V WAP is right there, move up. Okay, some guys took a little profit, others have stayed in, that next, that next day is, is January ninth, twenty eighteen, it's probably, the, the tenth is right there, you had the gap up and it then opened even higher. And people, okay, this is like Bitcoin right here, the run-up, the mania gets excited, the retail investors like us, you know, like, hey, man, you involved in that? Yeah, I got some calls, boom, I took, I, I took my profit right there. Hopped in, the people at the barber shop talking about, hey, man, did you hear about United, United, man, they have some blah, 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 I'm going on the cruise, but hey, I got my cousin bought stock, I have it, and then if the usher board and the, and the sisters of Nazarene, uh, are talking about United stock, like Bitcoin, when people, when, when, when like the regular dude, there was, uh, you know, uh, just, just the most, I don't know, uh, guys that really weren't into the financial markets, start talking about Bitcoin, you know, the mania has reached a, a level of, uh, of euphoria. What is it, what is it, irrational exuberance? Boom, your sell-off comes, now United is a strong company, so that sell-off wasn't gonna be like, like a pump and dump, but people took profits, the pullback occurred, a little bit of a bounce, gap down in, uh, January twenty eighteen, found some support, continued trend and United is still on an upswing if we back out, you know, but I was just trying to show just that within that, that timeframe and we're, let's see. We continue going, guys, and as we move further into the future, United, this is a trading range where it hits a point, find support, like you can, you can, you can short off the tops. Bet when it hits like in this range down here, it's gonna find support and buy back up, sell it. And so traders scalp within, uh, consistent trading range, ranges, once it builds its, uh, its history. And that trading range lasted, it's been in our, in our timeframe and now we started getting to the weakness of, uh, you know, the seven thirty-seven max right here a little bit, you, I mean, like December of, uh, twenty nineteen, when it really hit, uh, the orders started messing with United, Munoz started making statements, blah, 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 gap down. And now we're into the, the truth, you know, I mean, it's, it's true serum right here, boom, gap down, and so if you're looking to go long, yeah, you go long, but you have to put it down and the caveat is like this, this is gonna be a five to ten-year swing, because we don't know what part of the market cycle we're in, if this is a true recession, this is, this is stage one, or this could be just a heavy, I, I think, man, we're, it, it's gonna be some adjustments made when you see the government step in and, uh, and try to, try to adjust the market. Crystal, I was, I was part of the Bitcoin run too, I, I got in pretty early though, I'm, I'm, I told Mo a long time ago, man, I'll buy Magic Jumping Beans if I, if hear about something, man, and then it kind of, and I started hearing people, uh, oh, it kind of said from the barista at Starbucks and the motherboard, yeah, man, uh, the mania can take over and you can watch the chart and tell when it's coming and people will say, oh, man. Like, uh, what you call it is looking good, United is looking good, how, how is it looking good? There's nothing, now, if you're saying I'm buying it for a dividend and you say I have, you know, say a forty-two and I have fifty-five thousand dollars that I don't need for the next ten years, but I'mma, I'mma try to pull in, uh, I don't know, eighty-five cent dividend, okay, different story, but if you, most times cats are buying this thing and they're gonna say that it pulls back, it could take another haircut, it could, it could go down to that thirty-six easily. You, and you're like, oh, man, the market is manipulated, they're manipulating, yeah, they manipulate the market, but you gotta know that, but, you know, hedge funds can move it, but price is price and you can look that one up, price is gonna do what it's supposed to do and we can't dictate or get ahead of price just because it, it seems like it should be cheaper or that's hell, hellified cheapness, like that, here we go, Mo, we're gonna, we'll pull this one up, let's, let's do the, uh, the one we've been messing with for a full year.
And some, and some change.
Over a year. This is.
And some change, and y'all could probably check the pedigree and go back into the, into the group and see our, uh, post about, we've been going in this one for a good minute.
For the comments, just non-stop, man, we, and it was the day of reckoning, we're up, the high is, uh, four forty-one. That was March first, twenty nineteen, you know, around, we started getting ready for that, uh, I don't remember when, when the first, um, tragic accident occurred, but it was around that time, I think March twenty-seven, but okay, let's see real quick. Sell off.
I think it might have been that peak right before it.
Like right in here?
No, but the peak, the top peak, yeah, that one right there, yeah, that, I think that was around the first one. Uh, the one, the one, um, over in the Middle East, um, I think it was Malaysia plane or something like that.
Right, 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 okay, that's the first, yeah, and then they recover, see, the thing about Boeing, man, Boeing has built up so much goodwill, like, they have, you know, they have the, uh, the aerospace sector, their, their space sector, you know, different, a lot of different things, but when there was a culture, they, oh, it's a culture, yeah, blah, they'll bounce back, okay, yeah, man, but if you, the eye test kept showing that, oh, man, the engineers are messing up, okay, they're smart guys, okay, man, they're finding su- stuff in the fuselages. Uh, yeah, that happens, you know, there's so many planes on, and boom, and when they try to blame, they try to displace blame on the pilots, you know, you say karma, okay, karma, price has nothing to do with karma, yes, it does, man, because everything on here is emotion, this is emo- like, oh, man, sad, 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 a lot of pain, a lot of pain, okay, run it back up, a lot of pain. Oh, fair value, when it's down here at, uh, at three oh one, everybody's gonna buy Boeing at three oh one, if, let me see if I can put the, uh.
Actually, I kind of wanna contest that just a little bit, because
Go ahead, what you got?
And let's say something else, after that first drop, uh, one thing that I, I, the past couple of years, I've been very, um, I guess, becoming knowledgeable of and paying more attention to is volume, volume tell you everything. Uh, the volume is gonna tell you, um, if, if it's retail traders or if it's institutions. And if you look at that first peak, um, when it dropped, um, all of that volume going, even going down and going up has been the same, that was a retail reaction, um, as to what's going on. When the, when the Ethiopian plane crashed and then they found out it was, it, that was when, um, okay, it's the same plane and it's the same kind of issue, maybe it's something structural, look at that volume, look at the volume on, on, uh, even the smaller cell candle, that large, that large green candle at the bottom. Yeah, that one right there, that has so much volume, but the, the red candle's next to it. Also, look at that, those are institutions getting out and expecting, expecting people to continue the mentality by the dip, but you have to understand the economics behind what drove Boeing's price up to four forty in the first place and, um, like, at that time, it's not, it's not necessarily Boeing selling planes that makes, that made their stock price that high. What it was, was the back orders, their back order log is what fueled Boeing's stock price. So as the time continued to go on and that price continued to fall, that was because e- e- every, uh, news article that came out was about them not being able to deliver planes and then once they can't, they couldn't even, you know, fly the planes, they, they had to go back and fix it now. They don't even know when they're gonna be able to even get back, you know, the planes in the air. Um, all, all of those issues affect the, uh, the backlog and now, you know, they they in Upshift's Creek, basically. But it's been, it's been the backlog and not necessarily them, um, selling front planes or making profit from selling planes that's been the fuel of that stock price and so as the backlog is suffering and, and, and also the seven thirty-seven max was a, um, was a large, uh, portion of that backlog, like, uh, over fifty percent, like, very, very large portion of that backlog. And yet, even though, yes, they do have other businesses, the, uh, defense business, um, and other planes that they do sell, this max, they were like, you know, they build in the future and put a majority of, um, you know, their time and funds into this max, so it being taken off not only ruins, um, the backlog of orders that were already in place, they're not gonna be able to service the orders that were already placed, they're not gonna be able to take any new orders, um, and they're gonna have to take the time to figure out this software fix. And the, after they do all of that and they get clearance from the, uh, F A A and finally are able to, um, possibly get back to servicing, um, the, uh, backlog orders, they're gonna have to deal with cu- consumer demand, are people actually going to want to fly on the seven thirty-seven?
How, what was the sentiment? Well, okay, we, we've been looking at it from the negative side, just like, okay, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot going on with Boeing, the, um, the sell-off continues, but one thing that you have to watch for, guys, you know, because I, I've been short, I've been short, 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 and I got out today, it made its move, uh, I got out it, let's see. I'm gonna look for a trade, but got out when it, it fell down to one fifty-six, uh, ten. And let's see if that low was in there at all today. And it found support, you know, I, I put, so there, if you see this on the screen, guys, right here, there, there, there's a, um, there's the, a statement, you know, everybody says buy the dip, but there's also another statement called, um, all gaps must be filled, there's a gap in price right here where at the close of this, okay, this candle represents one day, one full day, each candle. So this particular day was March eleventh, which was yesterday. This, the candle or the, the opening price was two twenty-two ninety-nine, two hundred twenty-two dollars ninety-nine cents. The high of that day was two twenty-six ninety-nine, so basically it found its high kind of early and it was a wrap, it sold off. The low was one eighty-seven, it bounced a little bit and closed at one eighty-nine. Delta's, I'm gonna give you one more thing, uh, Delta, I mean, American, Boeing, excuse me, geez. Boeing's A T R is seventeen dollars, just to say eighteen bucks. Now, if we just add, let's say it's, this is one sixty, uh, one sixty-five and we can get back up to one eighty within a timeframe, so there's a chance Boeing finds support and pops and, and people, now, when it pops, that, that's, you know, you, you might have a short squeeze, blah, 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 and, and, but the idea is at some point in time, this gap right here, gap in price is gonna be closed, it's gonna be, it's gonna be filled and it, it's just, that is like a mand- not a mandatory thing, but it, it happens and people have to prepare for it, traders understand it where.
A high statistical probability.
Thank you, you, and, and you can't say exactly when, like, the, the gap that it filled yesterday was a three-year-old gap, you remember from twenty fifteen? Longer, uh, than that, but it finds a certain level and then it, it'll hit that level sometimes, it might keep going, but a lot of times it'll fill it and it might go back off, so be prepared. go back off. So be prepared for, if you're going short, you have to endure an eighteen-dollar possibility of an eighteen-dollar swing at any point. You don't, uh, so this is an hourly chart. We had sell-off from these last couple of days, uh, big, I mean, just, when you see so many red candles.
Yeah.
That, you don't go long.
And look at the volume. All of the, almost all of those candles were above average volume.
Just power, power moves, power moves. Exiting. And then they changed the, the, their guidance. Uh, it's Boeing analyst slashes price target. Price targets was, and they popped out all day, uh, actions, JP Morgan downgrades, JP Morgan downgrades, Boeing shares see worse, you know, on the eleven, and it all, and it trickle effect. Okay, so, you know, I'm short, I'm short, right. I was short on that day, took profit and tried to find another entry, got back in. Because boom, here, now, which Mo is, is really keen on watching volume because when you're selling off, it wasn't big time volume. Found a little bounce, volume wasn't that big, but the, that was a volume candle, you know. But it found, there's a price level right here, two thirty-sixty-eight. That was my line in the sand to go short. So it fell down, found support, fell down again. Found a little bit of support down here and two twelve was a, I was ta- a target I was gunning for. I hopped out, took my profit, waited, and that what is that, after hours, pre-market? And you see so many red candles, man, there's, there's nothing but sell pressure, sell pressure with volume and below two support levels. And then you, below your trend lines. And if I throw the V WAP on there, it, it just normally when it gets away from a trend line a little, it finds a way to try to go back to find a magnet to find fair price, but this continues down. And now, right now, it's coming up, trying to find a little bit of this. Let's edit this property. I'm gonna take this off, uh. Guys, Boeing, Boeing is still, uh, is still a primary short. It's just, if you do, if you do look for something, the, the, uh, the puts are gonna be pricey and it could go from down here, it could run up and close this particular, uh, there's a gap in price as well right here. Could close that gap without even thinking about it. And you'll think like, oh, my goodness, man. And then when they, people see momentum in Boeing, it, it continues with momentum sometimes. And it could run back up to two twelve, test that area, it could run back up to two thirty and test it. And then it could all, so you have to let price decide what it's gonna do before you try to jump in off of a news article. Wow. Now, one thing I was doing, I was gambling for the last year, every Friday, I would buy and out of the money put over the weekend. Early on, man, it would hit bam, bam, like clockwork, something negative would come out every week. And then finally they let the, uh, previous, uh, CEO, he stepped down and I noticed they would put a positive, uh, news story out, wait a few days, and then somebody would release a negative. Look, look at price coming up. It is making a move today. So with.
Is that an hourly chart?
That was hourly.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's gonna hit support and fall. That volume is weak and it's continuing to fall on every up candle.
It's going up.
It's going up on weakness.
Yeah.
So it's probably gonna hit that. I, I doubt if it go anywhere near. Yeah, it's gonna hit right there probably and fall back.
Let's see, the pre-market high was, pre-market high was, uh,
It may get to that red line. That red line look like it could be a support level. Might be at the top of that red candle or close to the top. Yeah, right there. The middle of that. Okay, yeah, so it could, it could be there as a resistance.
That's thirty, uh, EMA right there, thirty period, yeah, thirty minute right there. Let me throw the V WAP on here like, uh.
You know, that kinda go into my question. I was gonna ask you, I'm gonna play devil's advocate or rather maybe newbie advocate. Um, because kinda, you know, looking at, uh, you know, looking at things after the fact is always good. What's, what is your, uh, what's your signal? What's your trigger? What you looking for? Um, to tell you if it's going, yeah, like if you're gonna get in and expect it to fill the gap, when are you gonna get in? What's gonna be your signal? Or if you're gonna decide to go put, what, what, what's your signal?
Well, actually, man, uh, working off the thirty in the V WAP, we had failed below the V WAP, but in the pre-market, but it has not truly closed below the V WAP today. And I saw, you know, had to go, had to push up right there, pull back. That's the first pullback, push up, second pullback. I would actually go long right here with the scalp. And I would go long cuz we just, we bounced off the RSI. We've been oversold. We gotta run. This thing can probably, it's probably definitely gonna, it'll, it'll test right here. What's the? It's gonna test one seventy-seven. Now, the next thing I need to check is overall market. We go, I'll go the spy.
So this would be for a day trade?
Just a day trade. This ain't nothing, man. I'm short in all rallies, uh, but this is a, this would be a short scalp to the upside. Matter of fact, I'm, I'm talking this noise. I should play it on the, uh, on the leverage trade on Hugo. And, and just, you know, and then, okay. Let, let's go a little bit closer. And we'll see. Okay, guys, if I were to, um, look for, um, an option on Boeing, it's gonna be pricey as hell. Excuse my language. It'll be super pricey. That's the first thing. I don't want, I'm not into that one day of expiration, even if I'm just playing it for one day because, uh.
Do not do that ever.
Make, I mean.
Buy a Friday, a tomorrow expiration today on a Thursday, ever. Ever. I don't think I've ever won any of those contracts, ever.
I was just thinking about doing that.
Man, do not. Get one, get it for next Friday.
If you do.
It's probably gonna hit your price point on Monday or Tuesday.
I was gonna play the one ninety though, but yeah.
Who's your broker? Who's your broker?
Me, uh, TD and Tasty have two accounts.
Cool, cool, cuz imagine doing it today. Imagine doing that with the one-day expiration and, and whoever's watching did understand this is the little, and, uh, think or swim, that's the expiration date. That means when the day of reckoning with your options contract. But imagine being in Robin Hood and you got in and and that, that sucker is, turns around on you and the, and the damn platform goes down. I bought a cheap option. I bought it at, you know, that, or hey, I spent seven hundred on it now. It's going up. JD said it was gonna go up. And boom, you can't get out. As, that's, this money gone, man. So it, it's too pricey and then you go out of the money. And the, the, the delta is twenty-four. The Boeing delta's at twenty, man. They don't do crap. They really don't.
In general, you should stay, uh, above forty.
You got to cuz.
On, on, uh, call or put side, you should stay above forty.
Cuz really, if you have the money and you try to make a move, that, the, if you really wanna play options, you gotta be, you can't be undercapitalized and you need to go at least thirty, thirty days out. Go with the thirty-day monthly option.
The next month's, uh, expiration date.
And you see it right here, April seventeenth. And you, these are the strike prices. You go in, the blue area, we're looking at calls now. This is just in general. Where it's calling the money. The price of the stock right now is at one sixty-nine. That strike is one sixty-five. So you could sell that, basically, you can buy that. It, it gives you the, the option to buy Boeing stock at a hundred and sixty-five dollars. So in, in theory, you could buy that option. You have the option to buy that stock at one sixty-five. You can immediately sell it for the words to ask. You would go, you could sell it at the bid at one sixty-eight. You would make three dollars on that. And that, that's attractive to a lot of people, to a lot of investors. Hence the reason that you would have to pay twenty-six hundred dollars for that contract, which represents a hundred shares. But when you're also analyzing, you gotta look at open interest. Not a lot of people, but hey, shoot, the volume's slow. Uh, my connection is unstable. What? Y'all still seeing the screen, okay?
Jumped a little bit, but you're good now.
Okay, I'm just make sure I'm not laggy, man. Like on the game, I'm jumping all across the screen, killing everybody on, uh, Call of Duty, man, and so calm. Just lagged off. Um, anyway, guys, you, you gotta, if you're gonna do options, try not to just go with always the cheapest one. You try to go in the money or maybe one strike out. And a lot of times that gives you the delta you want. It, sometimes it can be pricey. I will, uh, and I, if I know it's a mover, the ATR is like seventeen. We're at one sixty-eight and if I was thinking bullish, I would risk it, but I, I, that's not, I would prefer to go forty or higher, but really, man, you can get right at that sixty or better. And it, it almost trades like a stock. So for every dollar move, that delta represents how many cents your option's gonna move. So the, we're tied to the underlying. The stock price is the underlying. It underlies this, you know, so stock price drives the options premium. So six, a sixty-cent delta, it moves a dollar, that option bumps up sixty cents. Now, there's something that you could research is called theta. For every day, each day, that knocks thirty-two cents off your, your option premium. So your option, delta moves up, price moves up, it's fighting theta too. It, it's fighting a lot of things. That's, but that's the give and taking options. You don't have to come up with a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to, or sixteen thousand eight hundred to, uh, participate in a hundred shares to get a little move. You have to come up with the twenty-five hundred and I'll also put on there, there, there's something, I'll do one more thing for you. Uh, I don't wanna. You can do the probability of basically if you're gonna be in the money or, or profitable. You put this on there, the probability of in the money means basically what's the probability of your option expiring in the money to where you, you know, you're making full profit? Forty-four percent, forty, that's, it's not a guarantee and it's not, uh, gonna say that if you're down here at thirty-two percent, it's not gonna hit. But it's, 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 it's again, you know, it's a long, longer shot. So that's something you could add to your evaluation list now. Boeing's making a push. The V WAP on the thirty for me is a line in the sand and it's staying above it. I would make this a long play now. It, it's touching the, uh, blue line is the, the ten EMA for me. That's thirty. If it can bounce off that, and what's, what's the high here, uh, one seventy-sixty-seven? I'm gonna go to a five-minute. Sorry about that. Okay, let's see. That was the breakout that we were looking at when, when I said I would enter. Found it in this pre-market. That's resistance right up there at that one seventy-one.
Now, when I look at that, I see an anomaly already. That green candle you was looking at? With the top, um, that last green candle, look how large the candle is and compare it to the volume. Now, look at the, uh, red candle right next to it. And compare it with the volume. Something ain't right about that. When I, whenever, I mean, the way I look at pricing volume, no matter what, uh, timeframe you're looking at, the, um, uh, action should always match effort. So the, the size or the intensity of the candle should be matched equally, uh, or, um, it's not necessarily equally, but it should correspond with the, um, the intensity in the volume. So if you have a large green candle, you should have large green volume. You have large red candle, you should have large red volume. If it's opposite, that's an anomaly and that's something that means that it, something's not right. Something, something is going on. So what's, what is it either with that big green candle that is fooling buyers? Or what is it with that little red candle that might be fooling sellers? So, um, and, and usually like now that I look at that, I will go back and look at other candles. Is there other candles where, um, there were small candles and, uh, large volume and what happened? Um, also look at the frequency of candles. And like, is, is it more uh, volume on red candles than on green candles? Or is it more volume on green candles than red candles? That is, that gives me, like, see that whole area, all that volume on the red candles completely outweighed the volume on the green candles. There's a lot of selling pressure still there.
I just switched over to, uh.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too. Somebody requested Southwest Airlines.
Well, look, um, dog, great, great breakdown on that. Think, with, with Boeing, guys, I'm definitely wouldn't, I'm not long. I'm short biased on that, but I was making that call on that one little there was a little block in time right there where I said it, it could pop and it popped. And then Mo noticed the, the anomaly where there's a chance Boeing that, that price, just keeping an eye on Boeing right, okay, right now Boeing is trading at, uh, one sixty-nine twenty-five, one sixty-nine forty-one. Okay, we'll see where it finishes up when we finishing, you know, analyzing this. Okay, love, Southwest Airlines for Erica. I'm in, I'm short right now. I hopped into a put on that a little while ago, um, the March twentieth, forty-dollar, four sixty. Delta is sixty-five, so. Open interest is we'll go back to the thing, this, uh. This is the, basically, this is the option shame, guys. I mean, puts on the, puts are on the right side. Open interest is eleven thirty-nine. I can do, I can work with that. Probability in the money, seventy-two percent. I'd be, I'd be just gonna be hard, high in this market, period. I'm just realizing that. So, okay, all right, Erica. When, when we analyze a chart, I like to start, prefer starting at the weekly.
Yep.
I look at the weekly, love. I'm a fan, I've, I've been a fan of love, but they had an aging fleet. I like to put my, uh, also put the, um, the news over here. In my news window, just in case something up, comes up like IATA says economic fallout of US travel measures will be broad and create enormous cash flow pressures for the airline. So the entire sector's in trouble. Southwest Airlines, uh, earlier today extends published flight schedule through, but they cut back, uh, last couple of days, they've cut back on, um, their guidance, but also their output. So, okay, CEO cut his own pay. Trying to make, you know, trying to find concessions. But anyway, trading range for, from twenty-seventeen, found that, just like, uh, United. But it, it hadn't had that day of serious, serious day of reckoning. It's, it's heavy, but it, you know, the sell-offs found support. And, okay, I'm gonna put a little bit of let's put a, I'm gonna put it some price levels right here without just getting exact. There. Right there. Okay, forty-five, seventy-six, forty-four, twenty-three. Still trading range, trading range, found resistance up there, double top. And February seventeenth, we're looking at the weekly. Let's go back to the daily. And and Southwest was, was the consistency of it was like for, for the long-term trader or investor, comfortable. You buy in your 401K, it's holding its, it's holding its, its levels. It didn't have to keep going up to the moon. It's just holding its levels. Then it found a higher, uh, trading range, found support. Pretty much a higher low from like a previous breakout somewhat. But we got the, the double top up here and the beginning of a sell-off. Sorry. If you wanna, whenever you wanna jump in, Mo, you got it, man, uh.
I'm just looking at that and I'm just like, man. That's a lot of money gone, but that's literally falling off a cliff. God.
Start of it on February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, it started bleeding and it just continued down. Even had a, the, you know, uh, the doji right here, that little white, that, that was a day where they couldn't decide what was going on. That was the twenty-first. Next day we had to get, well, that was a Friday, the weekend, I know some stuff happened. Bam. You get the sell-off and we're going below the, below the RSI to be oversold, but that's cool. to be oversold, but that's cool. It stayed in oversold status for, you know, that twenty-five, and the twenty-sixth. And then it found a channel that I was like, okay, I, I mapped out a channel on here that it was in, and I was like, okay. You shorted at the top of that, you tried to go long, uh, no, okay, then boom, it's trying to find some, it, it just it was a weird little, little segment right here, bouncing back and forth, and just a lot of noise, a lot of noise, a lot of noise, and then last couple of days, that sell-off, gap down, Southwest is in, uh, it's in a process right now of, uh, it, it's searching, price discovery within this market. The coronavirus has, has caused it, and it broke through a level that was years back, thirty-six-ten was a support level that I'd drawn up. This gap down is gonna, is gonna have to fill that gap, but that, that's gonna occur during a bullish recovery. You don't just go down and go right back up. That, that's
It's gonna have to find a floor first.
Fine, and when it finds a floor, it'll trend, and a lot of times it'll trend, and then it'll try to break out. It won't just boom, next day, green, a little bit higher, it might up, down, up, down, it's, but it's gonna have to test that because there's a lot got some supplies built up up here, gotta have sellers. Southwest is, is in a, is in a bearish, bearish trend right now. Now, we go down to the hourly. We go over the twenty-day hourly trend and, and just watch this trend. A slow waterfall, it's not as like the pour-down, but it, but it tried to find a little bit of support during these periods. In the hourly chart is about to tell some truth right here. Right on the green candle, I mean, right after the, is that the open? Open is halfway through here, so that's why half of this candle's there, but it opened at, uh, thirty-six-seventy, ran up, and hit that, um, the ten exponential moving every ten minute, and now it's poured out of bed, and that's when I hop, hopped in, had to make the move, the, and we're going down with volume. Volume's kinda declining, but it, it's in a different frame. It might bounce it off the RSI a little bit, but I think, man, this is going into the close, and then you know news is about to come out. Just for the sector. Look at here, this thirty-minute sell-off, that thirty-six-ten is, is a support level. Ran up, weakness. The big red candles had a volume increase there, light volume, because it's still building up in the thirty-minute, uh, eleven-thirty, it'll close. When this closes at twelve noon, I mean, at noon, I'm sure that volume will be above the green candle's volume. And I would, I'm short, I'm staying short, I don't see any, any reason to go long, like, right now, this is a five-minute chart. It's falling below thirty-six-ten. It tested it, ran up, got, it failed at that. Basically, that's the breakout. The breakout is right here. Boom. Found support, found a floor, like Maurice was talking about. Imagine if this was on a daily, this would be one day or a weekly, might be over a period of six weeks, and a lot of the, the first breakout attempts fail eighty percent of the time. Boom, fail. It failed and fell, it fell below thirty-six-ten, which is support. You know, and ran back up, tested and, and broke above that, failed again, and it's below thirty-six-ten, and now there's a lot of overhead within the intraday overhead pressure, and I can, I, I I'm sure, I'm not, never sure, but this thing might run up and, and into the close if some stimulus comes in, but the way it's trending, I'm short. Th- this is an all-in short play right now for me. Uh, I don't know if you have other questions, let's see if she put
That stimulus will have to be magnificent too, because he's tried a couple of times, and it's taken the market, so whatever they come up with is gonna have to be magnificent.
Okay, well, she's long-term. The thing about long-term, it's, if, if you're already in, like, in your, um, 401K, and you're consistently making your, uh, you know, if you, dollar-cost average, and you consistently, um, invest in that program. Continue with, with, with the, with the flow, because this is a five-year chart, weekly chart right here. It hasn't gone below those five-year lows. Five-year low right here is, um, twenty-fifteen, the low was thirty-one thirty-six. So let's just put the chart there. It's been tripping on me a little bit with the, allowing me to edit. I still don't know why I'm not able to do that, but anyway, we'll do the price level, left extension, right extension. Okay, anyway, thirty-one thirty-six, just play like that's thirty-one thirty-six. That's the five-year low. We're at also another, a level of support right in this area, the thirty-six-ten. It's broken through it. The lower that period was, um, thirty-five forty-two. So if we get below that today, I could see it running down, Southwest is gonna be, is, is tough. It's gonna, it might take a year, you know, to recover, might take two years to try to find its way. I mean, this is over a two-year period right here. You know, one and a half years, and then the run-up took a period. So Erica, I mean, Southwest is, is an industry leader, it's just the entire sector is gonna, uh, going through it. Hey, you want, let's go, uh, let's go, if you have time, man, let's talk about, um, Bank of America, uh, Mo.
Okay, I got a few more minutes, I do gotta go in a second, Doug.
Okay, yeah, I'm, 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 it, head on out to five-year weekly. It, this is just right now, dealing with the, the it's, this is the, the landscape, the environment we're in. It, it's a, we're going into probably a bear market, but go ahead.
Oh, um, you said that's the weekly chart?
Yeah, yeah, that's the weekly, it's five-year weekly. Want me to go to a daily?
Well, I mean, just kinda looking at long-term, I don't like the top week on this last candle, but, um, it's, it's in the, I guess, support zone area. Uh, banks are gonna be interesting, uh,
Yeah, man.
This is gonna be interesting, especially after next week, uh, because the Fed is expected to lower rates again, so that actually is not necessarily good for banks, because then they have to charge lower rates. Uh, so, um, I don't, I, I don't, I don't usually trade bank stocks, so, uh, you know, what I, I can say though, um, Bank of America is one of the better-run, uh, bank stocks out of the sector. Um, Bank of America and JP Morgan, uh, probably, you know, some of your better bets, but I mean, outside of charting, I wouldn't have too much to, too much to add on Bank of America. I, uh, in my report, I have every, pretty much marches and no buy, uh, well, for long-term investors, marches and no buy month period. There, there is no floor, and we haven't found the bottom, we don't know where it is, where it is, will be. I do think in the next few weeks, we may have some, uh, rallies, but like you said, like, the motto is no longer buy the dip, it's now sell the rally.
I'm selling rallies, man.
You know, I, I do expect some rallies and some bounces, um, especially going, uh, well, depending on what Trump decides to do with the tax deadline. Usually it's a bullish run-up until the tax deadline, uh, the first couple of weeks of April, so, um, I, and especially after this beating, I could definitely expect, um, you know, that kind of bullish run-up, um, in the beginning of April, but, um, you know, I, um, it's, it's just, you know, a- after April is May, and May begins the worst six months of the trading year. Uh, so statistically, the summer months are just bad, so if there's already such fear in the market, and now we're going into the weakest part of the year, like, you know, sell the rallies is just what I see for right now until
Look at, okay, look at, just on the thirty-minute. Bank of America is, is, is in a stronger position right now than, like, USB was the one I, I looked at early, US Bancorp was the one that showed the biggest weakness for me, uh, biggest concerns. I think Bank of America historically, like, when I told you, uh, during the last financial crisis in oh-eight, when I short, I, I shorted Lehman and all those guys, and I was able to short Bear Stearns with no problem, Lehman, no problem. Uh, I think Wacobia, Wells, but Bank of America always had strength during a week, you know, like, they would go down, but they found, they were resilient. That was the thing that I, um, I remember about them. I'm gonna keep up with this, um, I'm, the market's running right now, something, some news must've just come across. Except love, love getting his tail handed to it. BA's bopping up to once, Bank, uh, Boeing's up to one seventy.
Okay.
Hey, I'm still, go ahead, go ahead.
No, 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 I was gonna say that's, that's good, like, what I was gonna add to that, or to the Boeing situation, like, I, I didn't wanna um, make it sound like, you know, I was shooting down your trade.
No, I'm out, I'm out.
You know, um, looking into filling that gap, like, the things I would be looking for over the next, you know, few days, um, maybe looking at four-hour candles and daily candles, um, is green candles with strength. And if it, if it can maintain above that one sixty-nine, one seventy area, uh, for Boeing, um, and, uh, get some, some green candles and push with volume, that'll show that, um, you know, either investors are getting in, or what you, what usually happens in those rallies is that, uh, shorts are, uh, taking profit, and they take profit by buying a position, so it pushes the price up. So that's usually, well, I won't say usually what happens in a rally, but a lot of the rally stock prices are shorts covering their positions, and that pushes the price up, so
Especially heavily bearish move, uh, Dow, that was coming off the lows, and, but we're coming up on lunchtime, everything, you know, slow.
Slows down like a mo.
Look for news after lunch to see, uh, I'm an AMD fan, uh, my, my, that was what basically funded, uh, my daughter and son's, uh, accounts, you know, in at four dollars, so that, that's
I traded AMD last month, too.
What calls?
Uh, calls and puts.
Oh, oh, you went both sides on, okay, cool, because I, I just, for some reason, man, I just, I hadn't touched AMD, I just, you know, we have it in, in there's, uh, in at twenty, okay, AMD. Well, look at this, man, um, but Bank of America has trained, I think now, just the entire market is gonna struggle, Bank, let's see, twenty-two oh-six.
It'll need to clear that area with some strength, with some volume.
Clear up over all of this, even, even that area, just like right that's the final
That's the resistance point, the key resistance point right there. It probably, and it likely will for, uh, the rest of today. Especially looking at this last candle with that volume, it's probably gonna push up to that rare line, uh, today. But if, if it's going to continue and fill the gap, it's gonna determine on if it clears that rare line with volume.
Are you familiar with GDI?
Uh, it sounds familiar, GDI.
I'm not a, uh, I think that's GR.
Not General Dynamics, um, GDI.
Nah, that's GDI.
It's GDI?
Hey Erica, what's the name of that company? It's not pulling up for me.
Hardner Denver Holdings.
Oh, how, what, what price range is it?
Um, it's working at thirty-two seventy-nine.
Thank you, thank you. It, it just popped in. Must be my, my boy, the SPAS bumping really, really hard, SPAS, oh, boy.
Oh, yeah, it's pushing, it's pushing. Man, I was talking to another trader this morning, and he was in puts, I told him, sell him today.
Yeah, yeah, because this was a perfect day for, for the take your profit, and
Yeah.
The reactionary, the government's gonna react, everything.
Yeah. And we coming into Friday, the weekend coming, um, next week is historically statistically bullish, and after all this red, um, yeah, we probably gonna have a gap fill next week, up, a gap fill up.
I'm trying to get that loaded up, but, hey, um, but to get that next, next time on that, I don't know what's going on with there it is, ain't what AMD. AMD forty-one. This is AMD's part, I mean, the semis have been hit a little bit, I just think AMD is in position for the long-term. Just, you know, need a little bit of a needs to find some support, but we're dealing with a market that, that's, um, kinda coming kinda hard at us, man, you know, for the, for the long, for the investors. You got some support right here, uh, in this range, right? Thirty-eight eighty-one, even down, there's a shelf right there. Thirty-six forty-two, give or take, you know, so thirty-six fifty, thirty-eight eighty-two. All, all of that area could be your, basically, your, um, Fed to pump more than five hundred billion in short-term.
We go from fifty to sixty to seventy-five to eighty-five to one hundred to one twenty-five, one fifty, one seventy-five, and now five hundred billion dollars.
Your spirit trying to pull back on a brother. That's fine, Southwest trying to take my money back, but hey, brother's fine with that, uh, that's cool.
How much, how much, and, okay, and see, this is going right back to my earlier, uh, comment about, um, you know, finding the correlations here. When they bailed out AIG and the other, um, the other banks, you know, what, it was about, well, I mean, we definitely surpassed the five, six hundred billion, I think, or something like that, it was for them, right? All of those companies, when they, when they gave those banks, those companies, all of those companies were mortgage banks. This one, they're pumping it into the market.
Yeah.
What, what is the subprime issue right now? The market, like, is, oh my gosh, this is so interesting. That's why they can get away with not calling it a bailout, or not calling it quantitative easing, because they quote-unquote putting it in the market, but the market is where the bubble is.
Yeah.
Wow.
But look, uh, let's, close this out. I'm, I'm still in love, I'm still in the airlines, so I, I guess the next move, they're, they're gonna, okay, they're gonna stock cut loss, stocks cut losses dramatically after Fed announces new funding actions, alright?
Yeah, that's what we was doing, and we saw, we saw it moving five minutes before the, uh, before the news came. That's what I love about charts, man, because you, we knew something was going on.
It was a weird, it's like, wait a second, man, yeah, yeah, but look.
We enjoyed you too, Erica, thank you for, uh, I was gonna say, yeah, I gotta, I gotta call it quits too, bro. I'm like Stefan, I'm running a little behind too now, but I loved it, man, I loved it.
Well, I think, appreciate y'all coming in, man, I, I'm, I'm, I'll definitely, uh, uh, set this up again, man, and then, hope y'all can come and then mark it up, so I'm gonna close it down.
Alright.
Y'all have a good one, man.
Alright, you too, bro.
Alright, Mo.
And do this again and more often, yeah, we will.
Absolutely.
Yeah, alright, bro.
Alright.